Order the public hearing of the Vernon Hills Village Board of April 2nd, 2024 at 6:57 PM. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Markwart?
Here.
Trustee Forster?
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Here.
Trustee Schenk?
Here.
Trustee Cook?
Here.
Trustee Takaoka? And President Byrne?
Here.
Is there a motion to appoint a chairman pro tem for this evening's hearing?
I'd like to nominate Trustee Cook to be the chairman pro tem for the duration of the meeting.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Our public hearing is open. This is the time for public comment by anyone, if anybody wants to comment on our budget.
And I believe Director Lyons has an opening statement to make regarding the transparency of our budget process to date.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So this is the public hearing for fiscal year 2025 proposed budget. Notice of this hearing was published in the Daily Herald on March 18th. The proposed budget has been posted on the village website, on the homepage, for public viewing since February 28th. Further details of the proposed budget were presented and discussed publicly at the Committee of Whole meetings on March 5th and March 19th. This budget will be considered for final approval at the next village board meeting on April 16th. A memo outlining any changes to the presented draft budget will be provided to the board prior to approval. For any member of the public who would like to provide a comment but was unable to during this public hearing, they can reach out to me anytime prior to the approval of the budget. My contact information is available on the website. The village website, that is. Also, anyone can share their public comments at the next village board meeting on April 16th during public comments section. At this time, the village is seeking public comments on the proposed budget.
If there are no comments, you can call for a motion when you're ready to close the public hearing. Okay. Since there appear to be no comments, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Motion is second. As I vote okay on this, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, public hearing is closed. Might as well. I mean, we're seven o'clock, so.
Yeah, I'd like to call the village board to order a roll call.
Trustee Markwart?
Here.
Trustee Forster?
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Here.
Trustee Schenk?
Here.
Trustee Takaoka? Trustee Cook?
Here.
President Byrne?
Here. Here. Okay, is there a motion? Uh, pledge of, stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance. Do the flag. Where it stands. Okay, is there a motion to appoint Trustee Cook president pro tem?
So made.
For the remainder of the meeting.
So made.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, next item is citizens wishing to address the board. Is there anyone here tonight that wishes to address the board on something that's not on the agenda? Okay, hearing none then. Official reports. Under the village president, um, two things. One, some very sad news. A member of our community, Catherine King Murray, Kathy King, was passed away just recently. Kathy was very involved in a lot of efforts here in the community. Especially, she was very, very involved in the Pride Banner program and a number of other initiatives for the young people in our town. She was very oriented towards, you know, the students and that, and she will be greatly missed. We don't have any details on anything, but I believe there is a celebration of life that's planned for May, and hopefully we'll be able to disseminate some information about that. But it was a very, very sad piece of news, so. Did any board member want to comment on?
On behalf of the village president and board of trustees, the mayor asked that we deliver one of the pride banners that she was instrumental in designing to her house so it can be displayed at the celebration of life. So Public Works was kind enough to have one of the new ones that was going to be printed up this year delivered, and the family said thank you. So just sharing that, that the banner will be at the celebration of life.
Can I tag on that? Do you think it would be possible, you know, as long as they live here? I mean, since she was so instrumental in that, maybe every year she gets an honorary? Because we renew them every year, right? Like, are they new designs too and everything, or?
It's the same design. That was a design chosen by, she had a group of, I believe, students from Vernon Hills High School that made it, and the banners were, there was initial purchase of banners. This was the first time we did a program like this. We didn't know how they would wear. We're pleased to share. They're wearing very well during the month. So, but each year Public Works has purchased additional, and that's, so she was given one of the new ones that was going to go up this year.
I think that'd be very, I think that'd be a wonderful thing for the families, as hard times are probably going.
Absolutely.
Okay. And the other item is that we've recently been made aware that the niche website has again put out their best places to live. And under the new ranking, Naperville was one of the best cities to live in, and it was the best city to live in in the country. And Vernon Hills ranked sixth amongst the cities here in Illinois and in the Chicago metropolitan area. So good news that we once again, and that's based on things like a great place to raise a family, good schools, housing. There are a number of criteria they use, so we're very happy to have made that list once again, so. Good news for the village. Village manager does anything? Assistant village manager?
All right, so good evening. I'm going to introduce Anaya Bandell, a student from Vernon Hills High School, who participated in Student Government Week with the village this past week. And if you ever want to talk about the caliber of students that we are producing here in Vernon Hills, she had the option, like many of her friends, to go somewhere warm, to go somewhere sunny, but she chose to be with us and hang with each of our departments and hang with the village manager and all the staff for the last week. So an excellent student. She's going to join me in the second half of this presentation. So welcome, Anaya. Our presentation tonight is severe weather preparedness and emergency notification. And according to the Illinois Emergency Management Agency, on average, 53 tornadoes occur each year in Illinois. According to National Weather Service, nearly 80% of all tornadoes occur from April 1 through June 30th. Most tornadoes occur during the late afternoon and early evening hours, and as we recently witnessed in a neighboring community, tornadoes can and do occur prior to April 1. So they can be very destructive. So it's appropriate for us to now take this moment to remind our community that there's information available intended to keep ourselves, our family, and our community safe and prepared. So first, emergency notification. The village of Vernon Hills maintains a network of warning sirens to provide mass notification during emergency situations. Testing of the system occurs the first Tuesday of each month at 10:00 AM. Testing of the system allows staff to ensure all components, to include software, power, network, and equipment are operational. I bring up these facets of it because today's testing revealed an issue with our transmitter. The voice function worked properly, but unfortunately during testing, we learned the sirens did not work. Our vendor responded, addressed the fault, and conducted a second test, which revealed the system to be functional. Monthly testing and periodic maintenance are important parts of emergency preparedness. The village of Vernon Hills emergency warning systems are functional. They are located at Rustoleum, at the property at Hawthorne Parkway, at Oakwood Road, Route 45 and Fairway Drive, at Greg's Parkway west of Lakeview, and at Vernon Hills High School. In addition to notification from the village, residents are also encouraged to be prepared for severe weather by taking the time to plan and prepare before severe weather arrives, having several means for receiving notification of severe weather, to include use of weather apps or on a mobile device, and signing up for the village's emergency notification system, which we refer to as Blackboard Connect. Blackboard Connect was also tested today, and persons who are enrolled should have received a text message or a phone call, depending on how you signed up. Persons are also encouraged to identify a place to take shelter within a residence or a building when severe weather occurs. Persons are encouraged to identify a reunification point for family members should disaster strike. Residents are encouraged to learn more about emergency plans by visiting sites such as Ready.gov and the Red Cross, which offer tips for planning. For more information on all these subjects, please visit the website, and in the keyword, put "emergency warnings." I'd like to turn the floor over to Anaya, who's now going to further introduce herself and close out tonight's update. Anaya?
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the village of Vernon Hills and the board here to allow me to speak here tonight and to learn so much about the government this past week. I'm a junior at Vernon Hills High School, interested in participating in government in the future and as a potential career, and it was really enlightening to be able to experience a week in the life of somebody who works in the Vernon Hills village hall. As we enter the season where we may be vulnerable to the impacts of severe weather, we would like to take this opportunity to encourage all residents to sign up for the village's emergency notification system, known formally as Blackboard Connect. It is a system maintained by the Vernon Hills Police Department and is a great communications tool for mass notification. There are many benefits of signing up for the service, including that there is no cost, and it is a free service provided by the village, and that subscribers will receive emergency messages by voice or text and can opt to receive them on one's home, work, and/or mobile phone. And should an emergency occur, such as a severe weather or dangerous conditions, such as a gas leak, subscribers are the first to know. Residents can sign up for the service by going to the village website and entering, which is verninhills.org, and entering tornado safety or the words Blackboard Connect into the search bar, and the village tests Blackboard Connect the first Tuesday of March and September. The village will be encouraging residents to sign up for Blackboard Connect on social media, Channel 4, the village voice, and the website during the month of April. Again, the service is free, and information originates from a trusted source, the Vernon Hills Police Department. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for your work on this, and, you know, coming here instead of going somewhere warm during spring break. That says a lot about character. And the system works. I got both the phone call on my cell phone and on our old-fashioned landline this morning at 10 o'clock, so. Yeah, so it definitely works.
So they have to sign up for Blackboard Connect by downloading the app? Is it something we can touch base with the superintendents at the schools to kind of push it through the schools a little bit, to the families? Like through their communication? Would that help?
Yeah.
That's something we can do? I'm sure they'd be fine with that. Just to reach, more reach.
Anything else on this issue? Okay. Then, if I'm correct, the next item is the omnibus vote agenda? Correct? Okay, and that's items A through O? Is there a motion to approve A through O?
Motion to approve items A through O.
Second. Motion is second. Any comments, questions? On any of the items? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook?
Aye.
And President Byrne?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, there is no unfinished business. Under new business, approval and passage of ordinance 2024-044, and ordinance granting variations from Chapter 19 signs of the Vernon Hills Code for the two-unit commercial building located at 700 Town Line Road. Director Jennings?
Thank you. This item was on the committee of the whole agenda at our last meeting on March 19th. The variance request affects both units in this two-unit building. The south elevation has traditionally displayed signs for both the north unit and the south unit. In a review of the sign variation history for this property, we did not find a record of any prior variation that would explain why the north unit was allowed to display signage on the south unit. So during the course of the permit review for the south unit, which would be occupied by Sarajim, the, we had suggested that they go ahead and take care of the variations for the north unit, which is Bibbidi Bop, at the same time. So the variation package, as was discussed with the committee of the whole, is applied to both units. There's a variation that allows both signs to be displayed on the south wall. The maximum sign area on the south wall would also be increased. And then there is a variation for the west elevation of the south unit, which would allow an additional, a second sign to be displayed. There's no increase in the maximum sign area, but just placing a second sign on the west elevation requires a variation. I believe I have an image of these elevations. The reason that this is here is, under new business and not an omnibus, is that it did not leave the committee of the whole with a unanimous recommendation. So there, I believe there's a representative here. If not, I'm happy to answer questions as well.
Yeah, again, like you said, the only reason it's on new business is because it was not unanimous at committees. Otherwise, it would have been on a consent agenda, so. Does anyone have any comments? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Can you show the other picture of the south elevation? Yeah, I guess. Trustee Schenk, were you here at the last meeting? You were not. Okay.
No, I probably.
So yeah, I did not vote in favor of it because I thought that it seemed a little bit excessive, the size that they are right now. And we were, especially with the orange backing for the Bibbidi Bop, which was already there. But I don't remember the approval process for that, but somehow, if you want to chime in.
Yeah, so the background on the approval of Bibbidi Bop, the north unit, which is Bibbidi Bop, worked with the property owner to apply for a facade renovation. That came through the board. It was approved. Their sign images were shown, and the south unit sign was shown just as a placeholder. It said tenant. So the, it was not a explicit approval of a sign variation, but the facade renovation ordinance did show this sign. And as I had mentioned, the Verizon and Qdoba did display signs on the south elevation previously.
So which one is, they want the one on the right? This is current appearance?
Yeah, I forgot to correct that. That caused some confusion.
The one on the left.
The left.
That's what they want?
They would like the version on the right. They had shown.
Oh, on the right? Not the one on the left?
It is the version on the right that they're requesting.
Oh.
Smaller lettering.
Yeah, because last time you said it was the one on the left.
It is the, it is the version on the right. The current appearance was confusing. I forgot to update that label. They are proposing, they are currently proposing the one on the right.
And the Bibbidi Bop is already there at that size, or is it going to be?
Bibbidi Bop, what you're seeing here is a Photoshop image. Bibbidi Bop is real in that image.
It's real in that image, and it's, okay.
And the Sarajim sign is photoshopped on.
But the current Bibbidi Bop sign did not have the orange background, correct?
It does.
Right. But it's the same size?
Correct.
And that orange?
The current Bibbidi Bop does have the orange background.
Oh, currently has?
Yeah, it does. It does.
So there's no change to the Bibbidi Bop?
No change to that.
Yeah.
Is the orange, I don't know if you call it translator, whatever you call it, across the top, is that the orange strip? Is that current too?
That's current. That's real. The only thing that's photoshopped onto this is the Sarajim signage.
If you flip back to the previous, that whole wall was. That's right. I was thinking of the Qdoba one. Didn't have the background.
Yeah, right.
What's the west side? Again, can you show the west?
So that's the additional sign above the canopy?
But it's above it. It's not.
No, I understand, yeah.
So what's on the right is what?
What's on, so that sign is considered to be permitted?
To the rear.
Is, I, forgive me if I pronounce incorrectly.
Sarajim.
Sarajim. Is the height of the Sarajim on the west the same height as the one on the south, or is the one on the south higher?
It's a good question.
And should it be like kind of in line with each other? You must be an architect back there. Behind you, just nodding your head.
The Sarajim sign here does look lower, if you're looking at the image on the right.
Well, I would just request that they stay in line because it's, then it's going to get crowded. Like, even if it's the same signage. So Sarajim, if you were to wrap around, it should be following the same, think like the same panels that are on the building there, right?
Yeah, but don't you want?
I don't know what your opinion on that is.
Don't you want it to be, don't you want it to be the same as the?
So, okay, so the west elevation, the right side Sarajim, that's going to be, and then the south elevation Sarajim.
Is the same sign.
Same sign, but also should be the same height above the ground. So if you go to the south elevation?
Well, but you can't do that because then you'd have to move the Bibbidi Bop sign. So are you saying raise, are you saying raise the one on the west?
Except, but that would look weird with the Bibbidi Bop sign on the west elevation.
But that's no problem, really, to raise that, I don't.
I mean, right, to me, right now, if anything, if this was the only facade, Sarajim should be running down the middle line of the circle of the Bibbidi Bop, because it just looks, it just looks, to me, it wouldn't be something that I would pay for in my building. I would raise it up to be a little bit more symmetrical. I don't know. It's details, but.
Is it? But the height of the, is the height different? Is this?
He's talking about in terms of relative to the building wall.
But I'm saying, is the building wall?
Yes.
Higher on the right?
Oh, it's possible.
Look at where, I think if you look at the, in these two pictures, if you look at the one to the left, the Sarajim sign is actually below that temporary sign. And you can see to the right edge of that, that it's at the same height off the ground as the Bibbidi Bop.
I mean, maybe the best way, is the height of the lettering, the Sarajim on the west wall, the same height of the lettering on the Sarajim on the south wall?
It would seem it would be.
Hard to say.
Because it looks like it's higher to the, I'll say that, orange line on the top, so. Do you have, that's 44 inch high. Do you have the dimension of the one on the south?
So I think the, the lettering itself, if you're trying to compare letters to letters, I think the lettering is dimensioned at 24 on the south.
Does it say 21? I see to the right there.
The lettering itself is 21.
21, right.
And the background is.
And I believe that says 16?
So five inches.
And I think the center line should be the same distance down from the orange trim strip, but that's just my opinion. I'm not on P and Z, so.
If that, if that is a suggestion that the rest of the board would agree to, it's certainly a condition of approval that we could add to. It doesn't affect the way the variation was published.
I'm not going to die on this hill. I think if, if you guys all feel it's fine.
I'm fine either way. Yeah, I'll take either way.
You know.
I guess what bothered me the most, I guess, was if we could twitch back to the south again, the, just the relative size of that Bibbidi Bop and the large orange.
But the problem with that is, that's not part of the change. That's not part of this motion. Am I correct?
It is, and it isn't. It is part of the variation, the total sign area. And placing that sign. And placing that sign on the south elevation, which didn't have a prior approval. And I'd certainly be happy to pass on the suggestion to the sign company to just line them up.
I mean, it, yeah, but it also, the south also has a backing, like the 22 inch, 40, excuse me, the 44 inch backing where the west side doesn't, so. Are they painting the building?
The, the, the white? The white? Not that I know of. No, they stopped with the cement fiber board, which is on, that wraps both sides of the building.
Andrew, what's the, the white lettering? What does that mean? To the right of the Sarajim?
It's Sarajim in Korean.
What is it?
It's the name of the business in Korean.
It's Sarajim, but in Korean.
Oh.
And I read, it's the same company, is it not?
That's correct.
Sarajim owns Bibbidi Bop.
No, no, no. Sorry. That's, I didn't mean, I didn't understand. No, they're totally, totally unrelated companies.
No, really? Okay. Yeah, they're not, yeah.
Sorry.
Okay.
Where's Dom's going? That, you had the map up, if you could apply.
If I can go back to the first one.
In the green, or the?
To the west of Sleep Number.
It's west of the entrance, right, right there?
Yes. So that, that is Sleep Number that you see to the west of the highlighted parcel, and then Dom's would be to the west of that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, to the west of where it says Mall Drive.
Correct.
Okay, well then, is there a motion to approve 2024-044? Motion to approve.
As is, right?
Motion is second?
As presented?
As presented.
Is that what we're doing?
Although, it will be brought up if they desire.
Okay.
What the way I heard that was to pass on the suggestion, but not condition it.
Okay.
I'm okay with that. Any other discussion on this? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
No.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Uh, Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Uh, anything under communications? Anybody have anything they wish to share?
Just make sure everyone buys special solar glasses for Monday. Don't want anyone.
Yeah, make sure they have the ISO label. It has the ISO label on it. Yeah.
I think District 73 is giving them out to the kids.
Yeah, my daughter.
Or when they leave school, too. They're making them, like, the younger ones are making them put on when they, for dismissal.
Oh, what, are they, what time's dismissal, you know?
Well, I think it depends on which building, but I think there's, like, the kindergarten building was maybe around 3-ish, around in there. Because isn't it, what time is the eclipse?
The, well, it's for several, it's for a while.
Few hours, right?
But yeah, the peak of it is 2:07.
Yeah, I think they're just trying to keep them from looking up, so.
Was it 13 seconds or 19 seconds?
What's that?
I think the total eclipse area when it comes by, for us here, is like 19.
No, no, no.
Yeah, because we're only going to hit about, we're only going to hit about 94, 95%.
It's peak, but yeah.
But in some of the places in southern Illinois, that's going to be three, four minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A few years ago, there was a big celebration down south, and it was cloudy.
Yeah.
It is huge gathering.
That was 2017. And it shows that we're supposed to be. It went right over Carbondale that time, too, going the opposite.
And I'm happy to announce that the next time it'll be in Chicagoland, a full total eclipse will be 21/11, I think.
21/11?
21/11. Put that in my calendar.
So yeah, so, so yeah, book your hotels now for that.
Kevin will be close to you.
Okay.
You'll be on your.
Yeah, please, do not look at the, do not look at the solar eclipse without some ISO rated.
I looked at the light.
Glasses. Okay, anything else? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. We are adjourned.
Yes, August 4th, 21/11. In case you're tracking.
I'd like to call the committee of the whole meeting to order. Is there a motion to appoint Trustee Cook president pro tem?
So made.
Committee of the whole.
Second.
Yeah, you got a motion is second, mayor.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. First item is approval of the. First item is approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes of March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion a second, any comments, questions, corrections? Hearing none, roll call please.
Trustee Schenk?
Abstained.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Markworth?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
And Chairman Protem Cook?
Aye, motion carries. Uh, next item is timeout, party and play certificate of building and use conversion, one twenty-two Hawthorne Center, Unit two zero four. Director Jennings?
Thank you. Timeout, party and play is a prospective tenant, uh, which would operate an indoor playground with a cafe. They're proposing to occupy the former Gymboree unit, which is, you can see highlighted here, uh, near the entrance to J.C. Penney on the second floor. This is the second conversion certificate request, uh, that the committee has seen recently. The previous one was for a use that's considered a permitted use, uh, that was pure bar, um, which would be located under the AMC. The, uh, this one is for a, a use that does require special use approval. So, uh, if the committee is in favor of, uh, moving forward with this conversion certificate, we would, uh, postpone a final vote on it until the special use can catch up. But, uh, the, the total square footage of this unit is, uh, just over forty-four hundred square feet. The percentage of non-retail uses in the mall, if approved, uh, or I should say the portion of the mall that's under, uh, uh, common ownership. That would increase, the non-retail percentage would increase from twenty-eight percent up to twenty-nine point four percent. You have in your packet, um, the materials in support of the application, uh, highlighting, uh, just the, uh, the petitioner's, uh, uh, argument that having uses like this, uh, brings, uh, activity to the mall, it increases the length of stay, it makes, uh, visitors more likely to, uh, dine at the, the existing restaurants, uh, both at the mall and nearby, uh, and, uh, by extending their stay, more likely to shop at the, at the existing stores. So with that, um, the, uh, the applicant is here, I believe, um, we happy to answer any questions from staff, um, but if the applicant could come forward, uh, that would be, uh, good, thank you.
Hi, if you could state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, my name is Exan Aliu. And I'm here for permission for Hawthorne Mall.
Okay. Any?
Are you the owner of?
Should be the owner when it opens, but I, I'm the owner of Cinnabon, and then I have a, other place, a Zoom Zone, which is a kids' activity where you rent the animals in the mall.
What's the, um, isn't there like a blow-up type activity place in the mall or that?
There is a Fun Flatables that open.
How close is that to you?
That's towards the Macy's end. But, uh, this is more designed for kids under eight, so we're seeing a big void. We have a little play area in the mall and it's always crowded and from what I hear, even when I'm at Cinnabon or at the Zoom Zone place, they always say, what should we do with the little ones? Because, uh, even Zoom Zone, they're not allowed, for kids under five, they're not allowed to be there alone, a lot of parents help, so.
So what's your staffing going to look like?
Staffing?
Yeah, is it, or is it just an open free play area?
Uh, it's a small, it's a small, it's going to be small, it looks big on there, but, uh.
Or like supervision, are there going to be staffing?
Yeah, yeah.
Have staff for supervision?
There's going to be at least two or three employees there.
And what kind of, uh, training and background checks do you do with them?
With them, uh, just like the sexual harassment ones and just if there are any background, uh.
Do you do background checks on them?
I do background checks, yeah.
And you act on the background checks?
Yes.
Okay, it's just, it's just a fair question, so.
Okay.
Along the lines of what you're talking about, is there, are, are there regulations regarding staffing for this type of a?
Uh, I'm not aware of any, it's certainly something that we could look through, uh, when we get deeper into the special use review.
Okay.
And CPR choking, things like that, will they be certified?
Yes.
Will confirm that?
What's the, uh, payment policy? Do they come in for a certain amount of time? Is it a daily pass?
Uh, it's going to be an all day, we're working on the pricing, but most likely all day, just like the other stores are doing, um, you pay to enter and then it's for the whole day.
Can they?
You can stay as long as you want.
Can they exit, shop and come back?
Uh, yes, we're going to have that option as well.
Do they have to sign waivers?
Yes.
And I'm just going to say thank you for all the businesses you're having in our mall.
I appreciate it. Yeah, I know it's a non-retail, I mean, with Cinnabon, we pay that monthly and it does help the village, but try to do my part at both ends.
Well, keeping spaces occupied in our town is also helping the village too. I know you don't, you don't see sales tax from it, but it, it's a sign of health, so. And so, I, I, answer this one question because I wasn't sure, parents have to be there to supervise or do they drop off?
Yeah, parents, uh, yeah, we're not doing like a babysitting thing.
Okay, okay.
Parents will have to be there the whole time. Uh, Gymboree, I think, used to do, it's a, we're not changing anything, Gymboree used to do the exact same thing, just not as much obstacles, but they had the soft play and it was the exact thing. So we're not knocking any walls down or anything like that.
And if I'm correct, you deal, is it the, for the play place inspections, you have to go through a third party, right? For all the inspections of the equipment, like every six months, I believe?
Uh, no.
Like, like a, like a play place at a restaurant, you don't have, like, safety inspections? Can you go back to the one picture for me, please? Like on the equipment, there's multiple levels, right?
Hmm, two levels, yeah.
So how do you make sure that the, the integrity of the play place, like how do you inspect it?
Well, the, the company that's going to build it, well, I can call them to re-inspect, but I didn't know there was a.
I, it depends, I, I think it probably depends on the type of, uh, business, but Andrew, do we have anything on something like this? Like when you have like trampoline parks and with kids involved?
I can certainly look into it, I, I don't, uh, no, I'll stop my head, but I can, as they, um, if they move forward into the special use, we can absolutely.
I think we should take a look at that too, I think that's, you would want that.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't know, I mean, I, I used to own the train that was there too, and we had that once a year from the state.
Yeah.
That came and inspected the train.
Yeah.
So anything coin operated and licensed, you need that, but for this, I'm not sure if you need one or not.
I think it would help with your liability and probably your insurance too, but.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Mayor, any comments on this one?
No, it's, it's okay to approve.
Yeah, anything that adds to foot traffic in the malls, uh, right now is, would be a good thing, so.
Yes.
So, tonight you're looking for?
The, the ask at this point is consensus to prepare the, uh, conversion certificate. We would postpone the actual vote on it until the special use can catch up and do them both at the same time.
Okay. Should I, I'll poll the board then, uh, trustee Schenk?
Yeah.
I'm fine.
Okay, trustee Markworth?
I'm good.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yeah.
Trustee Forster? Mayor?
Yeah, I'm okay.
Okay, and I agree, go ahead and move forward with it.
Thank you very much. Good luck, appreciate it.
Thank you, good luck. Okay, next item is the Lincolnshire Riverwoods Fire Protection District, Station fifty-one slash fifty-three, a consolidation and relocation, nine oh nine South Milwaukee Avenue.
So for this item, what I'd like to do is go ahead and, uh, and have the project team, uh, present the, the concept plans. There are comments from the staff memo that I'd like to cover following their presentation, but, uh, at, at this point, I'd like to call the, the, uh, project team forward to present the concept to you.
Hello, can everyone hear me? All right, hi, I'm Natalie Clemens from Dewberry Architects, and I have with me Ben Eric from Erickson Engineering. Uh, we are the project architects looking at this test fit for the site at nine oh nine South Milwaukee Avenue for, um, the Lincoln Woods, Lincolnshire Riverwoods Fire Protection District. Um, the fire protection district, let me see. I, I have a quick agenda, I'll just run through with you right now. First is the consolidation of the stations into this one station that we are planning. Uh, we have the items that we're requesting for specific review that we want to go through with you, uh, the proposed site, the proposed building and the proposed elevations of the site. And I just want to put a caveat on that, that none of that has been approved by the fires district themselves. We are just doing a test fit of the land at this time to make sure that what they want will fit on the site. And if, once we get moved past approval for that, we will go back and revisit these things in more depth. And the proposed materials that go with that. And then, um, just some general edification on the, um, fire safety industry and how we plan stations and why we are doing what we're doing and asking for the variances that we are asking for. Okay, so they would like to consolidate Station fifty-three and Station fifty-one, um, both shown there into one station on the Milwaukee Avenue. It is currently on the, um, Ernie's site, which we will go through. So we're asking currently for special use for a fire station to be permitted in a B one district and for a government-owned facility to be permitted in a B one district. Those are both special uses under your B one. Um, we are asking for a side yard setback, building height, uh, leniency, leniency on the floor area ratio, and we would like some accessory structures, we would like to build in the setbacks in order to keep the site clear. Parking leniency, um, based off of the building usage versus the code applied. Resubdivision of the property, right now Ernie's and, uh, Ben will go through this, Ernie's is a subdivision on itself, so we need to divide that up and make our own property from it. And in that resubdivision, we're going to include the utilities and the stormwater retention easements. Um, one item for discussion that we've been discussing with the, the village is the dedication of Apple Orchard Lane. And then the site, general site plan and appearance reviews. And then we'd also like to go through a waiver of the fees. The Lincolnshire Riverwoods District is a not-for-profit and a tax-collecting district, and so, um, would like their fees waived for permitting and building processes. So the existing site, um, is Ernie's Auto and Truck Center, and the green area right there is what we wanted to, uh, take out of the subdivision, if you wanted to comment on.
So what we'd look to do is separate the two and still have Ernie's have the northern portion. There are some utilities we'll have to work with, uh, Ernie's on to, uh, get through our site. We'll put, we'll work with them to get those in an easement as well. You can see here, the existing area is basically a paved asphalt area where vehicles park. You don't often see it because it's hidden currently by a fence. Proposed site plan, uh, you want me to go, you want to go? Alrighty. So we'd look for a, the apparatus bay located on the north side of the site to have access right onto Milwaukee Avenue. Uh, this creates the quickest and fastest response times for the fire district so they can get out and serve their constituents. Uh, we have two parking areas on the east side of the lot. Those areas are in a, uh, have, are separated by an, an island in an attempt to have public parking near the main entrance, more towards the south, while we have the people who are at the station of the various shifts, uh, located at the north. They really don't expect more than about two visitors, two visiting vehicles at any one given time. In the instance where they might have another fire district or a larger meeting, there are temporary parking spots. These parking facilities are placed in locations that would block, uh, their maintenance bay, not necessarily an apparatus bay if they get a call and they need to get out. You won't go back and talk about the building?
Yeah, I do. So at the top, at the north end, you see, we, the proposed variance is a thirty-five foot setback instead of a twenty-five foot setback. That ten feet has become very crucial in how we can get the building flow to work correctly and the number of bays that the, the station requires.
So in other words, ten feet closer to the car wash?
Yes.
Than current, okay.
Yes. And the building height variance, we can go over in the, when we get to the building elevations. But if you note here on, I don't know if you can see my mouse, we've got a antenna that stands about fifty feet tall. It's very small in its, um, perimeter square footage. It is the, and, um, the document sheet might correct me here, but I think it is the communication for the entire station. Outside in the setback, we also have the trash enclosure, two dumpsters that can, um, the garbage can come and pick it up there. And then we have a memorial plaza, they do have a nine eleven piece of the steel, they would like to relocate to this site. We're showing it on the southern end near the, the entrance so that it can be enjoyed by the entire village. And then in the front, we would like to put a memorial, a monument sign up on a wall, um, berm that up a bit, put the two generators behind it and the outdoor patio for the firemen to use. All right, um, maneuvering, we have a couple of different ways to go through, I'm going to let Ben again jump in here. But we've tried to plan this out so that we are not blocking Milwaukee Avenue, so.
Yeah, we have submitted, uh, and are working with I dot, um, on, uh, getting approval with them as well for a, from a conceptual standpoint. But the intent here was to make sure that if the fire district wants to, uh, come in and not have to back up on Milwaukee Avenue, they have the ability, you can see that in the upper left picture, uh, where the, a fire truck can come in, go all the way around the building, pull into the apparatus bay, uh, and then back in, uh, to the front-loaded bays so that when they get a call, they can go straight out. Use the, using the largest vehicle they had, both on the north and south, we ran this. And you can see also the different vehi- vehicular movements, uh, if they want to go in a different direction to back up, as well as on the upper right, uh, pulling in and backing into those bays, it's a shorter vehicle, that's one of their ambulances, that what they're planning to store in the backside there. So they have the ability to pull through, they have the ability to front-load both of those, again, just to make sure that they can get out as quick as possible to serve the constituents. From a parking, uh, standards, we've talked about it, I mentioned it briefly with the temporary parking, but you can see here, we've got, uh, standard stalls, thirty of them, two of them ADA as required by code. Uh, we looked at a couple of different options, uh, and were given some direction on what, uh, from staff, what they would like to, like to see. And so hopefully this, uh, meets everything that they wanted to see as well. We do have the public and the personnel, personnel referring of course to the firefighters. But this, I believe, is a variance from what is required. So it's, it does meet the needs of the fire department, but does not meet the ordinance as it currently exists today.
So, and just going over that real quick, I'm going to switch back here because it looks like, um, so you can see these parking stalls better. Uh, we have two planned visitors, those are for non-appointed visitors. They often get visitors that come in and want their blood pressure checked and things like that, they just come to the station to get some general help. We have administration, since this is the headquarters, it will have eleven staff members and it will have twelve twenty-four hour shift fire personnel. And it also has a community room or a training room that they can bring in other stations to do some joint training with. And that is located in the basement of the building, but during those times, we will need extra parking on the site. So, and if it ever is used for a community function, extra parking needs to be on the site as well. That, since that can be planned, those are planned occasions, we have shown here nine temporary parking stalls. In discussion with the village, we would, um, stripe these in a separate color. And essentially the, uh, staff and personnel on site would park in those, allowing any public coming to the site to stay in this lower southern lot.
So that parking, is there the potential for like CPR classes and stuff?
Yes.
Is, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, of note also, we've got five temporary shift spaces that we're showing up here at the top, they're parallel parking spots. Usually there won't be more than a two-hour time period where something like this will be used. What happens is while the firemen are out, uh, all night, they come back, they get off shift at a time, and the next shift is coming in. Oftentimes, if they've had three or four calls during the night, they'll stay an extra hour or two over shift just to get some sleep in because they desperately need it. And so those five stalls are actually intended for that time period where there might be. where there might be a little bit of overlap in parking. Normal use doesn't require those use of the stalls. All right, and Apple Orchard Lane, you can see that yellow area here. This is the part of, um, the prop, the proposed property that actually is a road back to that back neighborhood. Now, when the property was established, I don't believe it was a formal road. I think it was a driveway of some sort, and it has become a road, it's become paved, and it's being, uh, maintained by the village. At this time, um, the discussions with the village have been that the fires district would like to turn this property, would like to readjust the property line to the back of the curb there and turn the property over to the village for ownership, maintenance, and use. So, and I, I, I know that in your report, um, it was mentioned, so I think we can save that for discussion time. And just to note here, IDOT is requiring that we dash the, um, or stripe the area outside of the apron just to warn traffic that there is fire emergency exits happening.
Would you be striping across the entire width of Milwaukee Avenue?
Yes.
And there, uh, with light notifications too, when you're?
There will be signs, there is no, that is not a lighted stop, so there will, at minimum, be signs.
Versus, like, when, when they're, uh, pulling out on a call, do, will lights, will they have their own traffic light? Not essentially a real traffic light, but just like a warning that the emergency vehicles are pulling out?
No, there will be lights saying that it, I mean, signs saying that there, it is an emergency area for exit, but no, those signs are not lighted.
Do we know the, chief, do we know the speed limit over there? Are we 45 at that point?
I think it's 45 there.
At that point?
Yeah, don't, don't hold me to it, please.
Somewhere right about in there, it drops to 35.
Going south though, right?
Yeah. And I'm not sure exactly where, because I think the 40, I think it jumps to 45 north of Ernie's.
Yeah, just, yeah.
And I think it drops to 35, just about, right about.
Assuming they're driving the speed limit too.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
I just, I, I, without any, you know, I don't know where the, what the, I'm looking at the, the, uh, GPS here overlay. I mean, it's visible. My concern would be coming in, going north from the south, because they're closest to the building, just kind of having some issues, somebody not paying attention or something.
Yes, uh, those, uh, anytime you put a sign on an IDOT roadway, it's, it needs to be approved by IDOT. Uh, they have not gone through the, you know, final reviews, uh, of any of this yet. So that is something they may require of us or ask of us in the future. So we do not intend on putting one in. It is maybe something that IDOT recommends or requires us to do.
Can I ask, what's the difference in lot size between this and the current 53, Station 53, and building size between what you're proposing and the current 53?
53 and the one by Corporate Woods? Or off Woodlands?
Yeah, 53 is the one right across from Lifetime, on Woodlands.
Um, this building is larger. I, I want to say it's a few thousand feet larger. I think we were looking at about 15,000 for 53, and we're, just for the first floor level on it, we are up to nearly 30 total on this one, 34,000 gross on this one.
Well, what about lot size though?
I, I am not aware of the lot size change.
Or buildable lot size, I guess would be the question.
And is the, uh, purchases, purchasing this property from Ernie's, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And how are they, uh, considering with the, uh, the easement, uh, from 30 down to 20? Uh, because of their car wash area, I don't know what their supplier is and stuff.
I, I, it, as far as, Ernie's has been very amenable to any changes that we've brought to them. I know we've had to ask them to move some signs, we're going to move some utilities, they're going to share their stormwater area with us. Um, there's been no mention of change in.
They're probably fine with it because they got to buy her for their property.
Yeah, they got to buy her, but.
Yeah, that's correct.
But I have a question about the properties just to the east of there, off Apple Orchard.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm looking at the first, the first home because you're looking setback on the east side also, right? So, okay, so your green line is representing which line on the other draw?
The green line here is the maroon line here. It is the property that we are buying from Ernie's.
And so you're going to go up, your, the, the east side parking is going to go to that line, is that correct?
To the green line, yes.
So directly to the east, directly to the east of the proposed lot is the stormwater management facility. Uh, it is heavily, uh, populated with trees, uh, tall grasses. Uh, it is a dry basin, and it has been there since, uh, they, since Ernie's built out this area. I'm not sure if it was 1983, uh, I'd have to, I'd have to go back and look. Um, but it is, it's a well-established natural area. Right now, existing just to the west of the basin is a large stockpile of rocks.
What about like a sound barrier fencing? Because there's going to be a lot of movement on that property. And chief, how many, you're going to consolidate two stations?
Two stations.
So if you were to take, on average, number of calls at each station, we could theoretically say that we're going to double the amount of traffic in and out of there? Um, I don't know what those numbers would be.
Then, I guess you could say close to doubling, but not as much as that, because you have 52 takes.
Is it going to take some of that load?
Take a lot of the calls to, so 53 and 51, um, take maybe 60% of the calls, 65% of the calls. And then the other 35, 40% is Station 52.
So if you were to tag a number in a 24-hour period, what we're, what you're, could be predicting, a range?
12 calls.
12 calls out of this new station a day?
Yeah.
And does this service Vernon Hills or just portions of Vernon Hills?
Oh, it serves all of Vernon Hills, all of the districts.
What about countryside though? Like, depending on where you are in Vernon Hills?
Yeah. So we cover the southern, eastern part of Vernon Hills, just a small portion of that, Corporate Woods, um, right in that area. And then, um, so yeah, it'll be serving all of that, all of Vernon Hills.
Is it true that you cover the high school stadium, but countryside covers the high school itself?
Correct.
Yeah, the line, the line, I think the line is the same as the line was on where the school district line is.
Yes.
Which was at the, because that was one of the problems we had with building the athletic fields. The athletic fields were in District 125 Stevenson, not 128, so we had to make some adjustments there. And where those district lines were, which goes right along to the, the, uh, water treatment plant there, is, is where the boundary of the two fire departments is.
Yeah, and the school district's there too.
So the decision to do this, I'm guessing, under one roof, you're decreasing operating costs?
Absolutely.
You know? What about response time?
So the response times, we've had response time studies done. And by putting the station on a major highway increases our response times. Um, but the, the study also had to deal with our whole district, right? Um, had to deal with 52, um, and possibly, uh, doing something down there later in the future.
Where's 52 right now?
52 is actually on, uh, it's actually next to, it's on Riverwoods Road and Deerfield Road. Um, it's setback, um, near Orphans of the Storm, right across from Orphans of the Storm. They're right, right at that location is, is where our station 53 is.
And 51 is that? Is that 22 right there?
Shelter by the, by the library, south of the library there.
Which library?
Vernon area, Vernon area.
Yeah, it's on Shelter.
Vernon area library, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, on Shelter.
On Shelter, on Shelter, right next to, there's a, I don't know if you know the.
Yeah, no, I know where it is, I know where it is, I know where it is. I posted up.
Yep.
Chief, did you want to?
Yeah, I, I just thought perhaps, um, uh, to, to your, uh, question, tr- question, trustee Shink, um, when you talk about where they cover, where they don't, I would just remind, uh, the board that, um, there's automatic mutual aid response systems built into it. So it certainly could be a situation where countryside ambulance or
Right.
uh, fire rig is not available, and, um, we're requesting Lincolnshire Riverwoods to be the primary responder in any part of Vernon Hills. So I just wanted to, to highlight that, even though they may not be the primary responder. And, and the chief could tell you a lot more about that than I.
Yeah, we actually have ARA agreements with Countryside Fire Department, where they are right now comes responding to the high, to the, um, the fields and stuff like that, right? So we respond together to those areas that are closer to their station, and we do the same thing with all the departments that we surround, Deerfield, Wheeling, Buffalo Grove.
From my, from my position, from my seat, it's very important to me personally that response time is not affected. In fact, putting this money into this is actually improved, and that is a very big thing, um, in my world. So I just, if that, if you tell me that you're in decreasing response time from what it currently is at, you know, that would help. But, you know, I am a little concerned about pulling out of Milwaukee Avenue. There's got to be better ways to mitigate it, I think, you know, somehow. You know, I've seen it where, like, if I recall, I think in displays, their fire department comes pulls on River Road. I believe they have like an overhead light of some kind. You know, I just don't know what IDOT has to say about that.
I think that's the restriction. IDOT restricts everybody.
Brutal.
And it doesn't make a difference if you're a fire department or not, they have their restrictions.
Mundaline might have yellow flashing lights on 45 there. They have a, they have a, a station right on a
Right.
four-lane, right there north of the jewel.
Chief, do you know?
Just north of, uh, the river tracks.
Do, do they have, they have yellow flashing warning lights, don't they there?
It only activates when there's a call, and you're talking
Right, on a call.
all time of the day.
Correct.
Right?
I'm not sure.
IDOT, IDOT's going to have a lot to say.
Yeah.
Think so?
Yeah.
Because you're interrupting the traffic flow anyways, right? When you pull out, I mean, obviously, you're all lit up. You got your own flashing lights, is what they're probably going to say.
Yeah.
You're better.
Right?
That's what they'll say.
Yeah, the people should be stopping, yeah.
Should be.
But, yeah.
And when we get more clarity from IDOT, we can ask. Um, we do, we also have things we are taking, we are in first rounds with IDOT. We, they have moved us to a project manager, so that's, uh, fortunate for us. But one of the, IDOT's initial discussions was taking a sidewalk across the apron. We, of course, would prefer not to do that, not have pedestrians walk on the apron, so we're going to follow back with them to reconnect to the sidewalk that is across the street from Milwaukee, but not necessarily across our apron.
Like a sidewalk to nowhere.
I know. Yep.
So, yeah, currently, there's a sidewalk on the west side, not.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, uh, I, I guess I didn't understand that, that last comment then. What, what about the sidewalk?
That's IDOT in their will.
IDOT has a policy called Complete the Streets. Anytime they have a roadway, they want to have a sidewalk so people aren't walking on the street instead of walking on the sidewalk.
Oh.
There's no great place to cross here, there is no li- intersection to safely cross here.
Right.
Uh, that request is probably coming from the Complete the Streets program and not really applying a lot of thought to it. They're just going through a checklist at this point in time. Uh, so that is something that we would talk to them about because you don't ultimately want a lot of people crossing an apparatus bay. When the fire trucks are pulling out, they got other things on their mind, speed being one of them. And so waiting for someone to cross or having to look for them is not ideal. Nevertheless, it's a sidewalk to nowhere, as you said. Who's, who's going to be walking that, there anyway?
They couldn't get there.
My guess is, prepare to put a sidewalk in. Just dealing with.
Right, but there, but there's no sidewalk in front of Ernie's, and there's no sidewalk
Doesn't matter.
south of that.
It's this, it's an initiative that they have, so if you're, if you want to prove on an IDOT roadway, you're putting a sidewalk in.
Yeah.
Really?
Uh, just to show you the floor plan, since we do have them more developed, we are doing a four-bay, uh, layout here. It's 120 feet long, clear on the inside. Um, this allows their major vehicles to sit facing out to Milwaukee. These two purple bays you see in back are mechanic's bays. That's where they'll be pulling in to fix any vehicles. And this thing here, you see this kind of empty, that's where they keep their, um, battalion chiefs trucks and that smaller vehicles, road vehicles. Um, we, this area in the center, this is all apparatus support in the dark purple. It, it's the items that help them operate. It's basically the fire personnel's office. When we come down to the, uh, floor plan of the, the actual usable building, we're keeping the whole first floor plan being towards the living spaces of the fire personnel. So we've got kitchen and dining, their day room, a large joint locker room. One of the goals here is to make the facility gender neutral, so individual toilet rooms and shower rooms and individual bunk rooms. The public will enter from the back, they're going to enter a vestibule, and basically, if they want to go to the administration, which is why they would come here, they'd go up. If they want to go to the training room, they'd go down. Um, there will be a small public meeting room that is right next to the door. That, again, is for the people that are coming to get their blood pressure checked and do basic, small things where they don't need to traverse all over the station. The district also has an antique engine they would like to display. That's this item you see out here in front. They are designing a space in the architecture to display that for the city to enjoy.
Well, um, you said you're going to need a variance on the FAR. What kind, do you know what kind of percentage you're talking about?
Yeah, we were at, um, I don't know, maybe I can read it better on here. I think the code calls for, I have it in there. The code calls for 25, and we need 31 to make this building happen.
So you're building on 31% of the total lot size.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, that's about a 20% variance.
Is that a?
It's not too bad.
I don't think that's a flood plain, but is it a floodway over there with the river?
Uh, you are out of that.
You, well, you're out of that. I'm not in it.
The site is out of that.
So with the, so I noticed you have, and then, one, you have a basement. Is there a concern about that?
We will, we will do soil borings to make that determination, to determine what kind of, uh,
Soil.
soil you have where the existing water table is, and then how to protect the building.
Could that potentially kill this project if it's?
It could.
Because you need the basement, right?
It is part of this due diligence period, is the geotech.
Another question for the resident or residents, I should say, to the east and also, I believe that's a rea- rehabilitation center that's also back there on the east, uh, southeast corner of it. How is this with, with them, with, uh, regards with, uh, the roadway? That road coming in and you wanting to take part of that road?
We don't want to take the road, we want to give it back to the village.
Yeah, right, uh, right now, there's a section that, that's still private.
Yeah.
That's where that.
Yeah.
And I'm just saying, how is that?
Well, what's funny is not all of the road is private, which is.
That's the thing.
They, they have their own easements, um, of maintenance and manage through the town south. So we are hoping to discuss with, um, the village, maybe matching those easements, taking the, the onus off of the district is the primary goal here.
How, how about the residents directly across the street to the west? Will this be unduly burdensome for them in terms of sirens and other things?
Um, in my experience, there's a lot of initial
Concern.
we don't want it, it's loud, it's li- it's got lights. Um, and then within a year or two, they love it because the, the fire personnel are very respectful of neighbors, of residents. They, unless they are required to, because they are going to hit somebody, they will usually not throw the lights and sirens on, um, immediately.
In order to get out safely onto Milwaukee?
We, we will always respond. To emergencies with lights, okay?
Yeah.
It is at the discretion of the officer when you're going down Milwaukee Avenue at 2:00 in the morning and there's no traffic, whether to use the sirens or not, right? Um, so, but yeah, we will always respond with lights to emergencies. And sirens going through intersections.
Through intersections, yeah.
Correct.
It's difficult to say when, with your residence. I, I know the mayor is right across from Fireside. I'm just down from there. I have the, uh, the, uh, police station just behind me. I don't know, I've lived there 45 years worth, I.
Countryside's right in the middle of residential, so.
Countryside, considered, knowledge in about just the white side and no sirens, you know, when they leave the station on Deer Pass.
Yeah.
So it's.
You know, lights, sl-. You know, lights, lights only and they need the sirens, I'm sure they use. But it's not an inconvenience.
Nope.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
What kind of, kind of pollution, you know, environmental reports have you done this far? Cause this is a storage yard.
Yeah.
And what kinda, you got trucks, you got cars, you got stuff leaking all over the place. You gotta do any kind of a cleanup?
Yeah, we have so far conducted, conducted a phase one environmental and that came back clean. That was the historic, that's the historic environmental usages, large tanks, et cetera, that might be underground. The, um, we are signed up to get a soil environmental report conducted with our geotech. So that will be coming in in our, our one hundred and eighty day grace period that we have here.
Okay. And what about flooding? Would the, weren't the, the homes back there flooded on a regular basis?
I'm sorry, I
Up at Apple Orchard?
Similar to the question I was asking about the flooding in the area and the homes.
So as you continue, uh, down Apple Orchard towards the east, uh, the homes get closer to the river and the elevation, uh, change, there is an elevation change that does occur. I don't have it in front of me right now, uh, but there is a decent amount of elevation change and you do get into some flood, uh, plain areas as you get closer to the river as you head towards the east. Uh, this site, the basin itself is dry, uh, when you go and look at it, indicating that the groundwater is at least, you know, dry to that elevation. I do not know if any of the homes have basements that are east of this site, uh, but those are things, again, for this site, when we get the soil borings, we'll be able to tell where the groundwater table is and how we might need to mediate that if it is an issue.
Well, and did you say just east of that is between that and the homes, some of that is detentionary, right? Correct?
Yeah, there, there is a detention area between us and the homes.
Yeah, a buffer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, who owns and controls Apple Orchard now?
So, right now, Apple Orchard, uh, is partially owned by Ernie, uh, or whoever owns Ernie's. Uh, that is their property, um, and even though it probably functions more as a village street, uh, I'm not sure who, uh, takes the snow off of it and maintains it. But currently, right now, it is partially owned, uh, by the people that own Ernie's.
So just to interject briefly, the, we, we've been working with them to try to figure that out. There's a easement agreement that's referenced on the plat of survey for Ernie's as well as the plat, uh, for the shopping center to the south. Uh, we have, as a staff, not yet seen the easement agreement, so we don't know exactly how the maintenance functions right now. We do know that the village doesn't maintain it. Um, the, as, in the, uh, construction of the shopping center, there were requirements, um, by the village to improve the, the road section to, uh, something more comparable to a village standard, but the village does not maintain that road. Uh, it is, it functions, as far as the village is concerned, like a private driveway that serves a small, uh, segment leading into the shopping center and then the residents to the east use it to get to Milwaukee Avenue. So, uh, we, we do need during technical review to actually see that easement agreement to see how the, uh, twenty-foot and twenty-foot split, uh, is actually maintained currently.
Would you run the fire equipment on that road?
In the return, in the return, we would run it on that road.
Well, then they, now they, I can tell you now then, it's gotta be built to a certain, you know, structure, engineering structure, you know, cause then it's gonna have, heavy trucks.
Yeah, the weight.
Who's gonna pay for that?
Well, and it'll be interesting to find out if that, that little strip center just to the south of there, whoever owns that, if they own the other half of, probably do own the other half of Apple Orchard Lane.
They, they do currently own the other half.
Yeah, that's what I thought, cause it's all private, correct?
So then they would have to pay to maintain a road that has fire trucks.
Or you get, they get an easement with, with the mall and they'll, they'll ma, they'll build it and maintain it with the easement, so they'll, right, cause
Was, was that the intent of, of yours for, for the fire district to pay?
No, the fire district would like to turn the land over to the village.
So you want the village to pay?
Well, that's what I was gonna say. Yeah, brought up.
You, you, you fix it and we maintain it, is that the deal?
Yeah, if, if we
But you're only fixing half the road, like, cause the other half's not
I don't think that that's how we, we couldn't just do half. We'd have to get an easement with the southern owners.
So then we would take over the easement then, right?
But it would all be brought up to the standard required for that weight of
Yeah, for the weight
And the mall would have to sign off of it. And my guess is, well, that'd be between you, I'm saying shop, strip mall, between you and that one.
Yeah, that'd be between us and them.
Yeah.
Yeah, this was one of the primary issues that the staff had identified that needs to be, uh, explored further during technical review. We just, we don't even know, we don't know at this point. We, we need to see that easement agreement, um, we need to go through it, we need to work with them on that to see, uh, how, how this is currently maintained and how would they even go about, uh,
You're gonna need
Uh, changing this, the, the section of this road as well, so. Uh, one of, one of the biggest concerns that we had.
Are there sewers on that road? So if there's sewers on that road, who built the road? Like, they're tied into somewhere, right? They're not tied into the river. So they're going in, into, into Milwaukee Avenue.
There's utilities down that road too.
There's, there's utilities, there's, uh, sewers. The shopping center to the south most likely got a permit from the county because there is a special structure based on the lid called the Vor Technics, which is to help clean the stormwater, uh, something that would be required, uh, by county ordinance more, uh, as a potential solution. I do not know where the sewers go, uh, in the roadways, as I don't
Cause that might dictate who's, who's fixing the road, maybe. I mean, county or, you know.
Well, cause that shopping center has no direct access to Milwaukee. It's, Apple Orchard Lane has its access.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And looking at stormwater and at the beginning of it, you can see the grid and it goes down further.
Roger, do you remember when, uh, any history on this road?
It's not, well, I've always thought it was there just to service the folks that had their houses back there and it was like a driveway.
Yeah.
Yeah, and originally in the phase one test, it was a service to the orchard that was, used to be on
Right.
gravel road.
All right, well.
Well, so long as you guys bring it up, the code, maybe we can figure this out. We don't certainly wanna bite the bullet to do a major repair to that road.
How much of a difference in response time do you think it really will be for this compared to, at least compared to fifty-three for the local residents being off of Milwaukee directly versus just having a stoplight there?
So what's the response time gonna be?
Yeah, what, cause you, you said there's a, a reduction in response time, like, how much of a reduction can there really be?
No, 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 no. With, no, I, then I, I must have misspoke. So, um, by moving the station, we're to looking at, to move response times to go to our, the majority of our calls, the hotspots in our area. Um, we're gonna have to also look at possibly moving Station Fifty-two closer to Milwaukee Avenue, cause it's closer to the tollway. Okay, so this is just, we're trying to figure out all of these things together. Um, we've had some studies done. I don't have those studies with me today, um, but we can get you those studies, uh, those response studies.
And did you look at just expanding the other station instead of putting it on Milwaukee?
Well, it's
The fifty-three one, at least.
Well, we have looked at fifty-three.
Uh, this is Jonathan Tomlin from Dewberry. Um, the site for Station Fifty-three is too small for thirty-four thousand, almost thirty-five thousand square foot fire station. Um, it's, we're unable to do in addition to that building in that size of, of addition. And then we did look at Station Fifty-One, doing an addition there, um, or sorry, renovating that facility. It is very cost prohibitive to renovate that building for the, for the fire district because of the age.
Hmm. Okay, any other comments or questions? It sounds like we've got a lot of other information to gather.
I do have more, if you'd like me to
Oh, sure, go ahead. Sorry, go ahead.
So, um, this is the second floor. This is the administration space. So here you can see, we come up, we open and look down onto the antique vehicle, the chief, deputy chiefs, uh, shared meeting rooms and mechanical spaces are located on this second floor. There's also a loft that looks over, or a mezzanine that looks over into, to the apparatus bay that will be used for some indoor training here on the facility. And the basement level has the fitness room, the community room, toilets, and then some additional storage. Um, here on the elevations, as you can see, we are asking for a height variance here. Um, we can get basically the top fascia of this structure in at, at code. We, we have it listed here at thirty-four feet. I think your code calls for thirty-five feet. If there are any mechanical screenings that need to happen, that is what we are asking for the variance for, mechanical screening.
What's that for? Not, not the, not the mechanical, but the glass enclosure, that, that elevated area?
This is the administration space.
That's the administration space? Okay.
Um, just to go over, again, these have not been approved by the district. This was just our first stab at getting something they like. They do love the classic apparatus bay look, so brick and masonry, and I can take you to, I just wanna point out real quick, uh, classic look, and then a little glassier to update it. Uh, we do have this large monument wall in the front that's bermed up. Side elevation, this would be the side on Apple Orchard Road where it's, uh, very civic looking with its repetition of form. And then back here is where the public entry and memorial space would be. This is the side that faces Ernie's. Again, just some light into the apparatus bay.
Next to the car wash.
Yeah, next to the car wash. And these are some, just some quick renderings of the space. We looked at the materials of the neighborhood here. Material survey through the neighborhood and we wanna repeat those so you can see that we've identified on the site some, um, warm brick, red doors, white metal panels, classic limestone, uh, teal glass here, um, some greenery. And here is a zoom in of the initial materials that we discussed with the station. Now going real quickly through this, this is not gonna show as well as I planned it. Um, I just wanted to give you a real quick why this building has to be the bulk that it does. You see this red space right here? We call this the hot zone. This is technically contaminated space that will all the time carry carcinogens that the fire personnel are exposed to. Um, we have this orange space in the middle that is the kind of clean zone. It goes back and forth from being contaminated to being decontaminated. And that yellow square you see on the bottom, that is the clean zone or the green zone. That is where when, when the fire personnel come through that orange space, they should be, their bodies should be completely decontaminated of any carcinogens just to keep them healthy. Studies have been done showing that they can, carry these carcinis, carcinogens, um, with them throughout the day. They take them home to their families, they spread them around all of their belongings. So if we can get the decon happening right here, right off the bay, we significantly reduce the risk of cancer. Um, for wellness and privacy beyond the cancer, decontamination, we are making an active effort to keep a quiet zone and then a noisy zone in the building. The noisy zone involves some outdoor space for the firemen that is barricaded by that berm that we put up. And then this southern light that comes into all of their living spaces promotes
You have the generator's in that outdoor space too, right?
Yes.
They just don't take up that much space?
We have them tucked against the wall out there, yeah. Safety and training, these are all the areas, they train every day. They're always training. So these are areas that we like to incorporate them into the station as much as possible so they can train while they are at work and not have to be shipped off to another training location to do their training. So, um, all of the loft space, all of the downstairs, there is classroom training and, as well as their fitness training, um, any bay area they can take as training. And upstairs, they are dedicating a training officer with training spaces on the second floor. Public access, so the public will have access to the entirety of the second floor. They will have access to the front half of the first floor and I, this circle over here is showing that, that memorial, that nine eleven memorial will, uh, be right there at the corner of the public area. And then the community room down in the basement. I apologize for the graphics. My transparencies became opa, opacities. Okay, so are there any more questions?
So, um, Director Jiang, where are we at in the process here?
So, uh, there was one other item from the staff memo, uh, that I just wanted to, to get some feedback on. The, uh, the project team had requested, uh, a waiver of the fees as they go through the process. I look back at, um, the, the project history of other similar, uh, projects by public agencies. We, we do have a precedent of a permit fee waiver. The, uh, request that I would have is we have the development review process. We do have, uh, fees that we have to pay using that money. So the technical review pays both for staff as well as, uh, the, uh, the fees that we have to pay to outside agencies, so stormwater review and that sort of thing. So while we don't have a, I, I don't have a particular objection with the permit fee, um, the, the direct costs of the village are paid by the development review process fees. So the technical review fee and the development escrow fee, uh, I, I would argue, uh, should be paid as part of this to just cover our costs.
Okay. Um, you can give us a breakdown on that then?
Yeah, it's by, it's by the site, the size of the site. So the total, the total acreage.
Cause as a general rule, most times when it's another taxing body, we tend to waive as much as we can historically.
And we didn't have any objection with that. This is gonna be a very expensive building and our, our permit fees are value-based. So we didn't have any particular objection with that.
Yeah.
Uh, we would ask that they provide some sort of performance guarantee for the site work, uh, but that's, that's not cash direct to the village, that's just a bond that we hold.
Yeah, that's bonds that, that go back.
With the initial, the initial development review process, uh, we, we do have direct costs that we incur that we, we would, uh, argue should be paid as part of that. It's a much smaller amount than the permit fee.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, that, we'll wait and see when you bring us the numbers. Anything else? Mayor, anything else?
Uh, no. Sure we'll be able to figure this out. And, uh, you know, we certainly wanna work closely with the department and we will.
Yeah.
Sounds like a good project.
Yeah. All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, last item on the agenda for tonight is the V-HAC parking lot expansion.
Yeah, so, uh, back in January, uh, the board approved, um, an engineering contract with Thomas Engineering Group to, um, do, do design for a parking expansion at the V-HAC, at the V-HAC facility. So they, they came up with, uh, two ton, concept designs. So, so far, they've committed, completed all of their, uh, preliminary engineering and we're, we're kinda at a fork in the road of, of two different options that we wanted the board to review. Um, some caveats on this, these are all, uh, we're still in the conceptual level of the design, so the costs are subject to change. We, we kinda used kind of worst case scenario of what we expected here. Um, also, both designs will require an easement with District One-O-Three, a permanent easement, um, as well as a temporary construction easement. Uh, they own the property to the, to the south and west here on the, um, the fields. So I, I reached out to the superintendent over there. He, uh, is gonna be taking this request for a, a permanent easement and, and He is going to be taking this request for a permanent easement and, and take it for discussion to the school board on April 9th. So we'll get some feedback on, on how they feel about granting that, that easement after that time. So to, to look at the two options, option one is really the, the most value-based option. It would get 100 stalls. This is basically what we budgeted for currently in, in the 2025 budget. The cost per stall is about $3,978. This doesn't require any upgrades to our stormwater facilities in the area. This is basically the maximum amount of stalls we could build on this site without increasing our detention pond. Option two would be to maximize the total parking we could get in that area, which is just between the two parking lots along the side of Nike Parkway. This would get us close to 150 stalls. You'd see the, the cost per stall jumps up pretty dramatically, and that's due to the stormwater costs. So we would be looking at extra construction fees to either expand the existing detention pond, adjust the outflow structures. We haven't yet done the engineering on exactly what that would entail. We just know that we can't, we don't currently have the capacity. So of course, the other half of that cost would be an increase in the engineering fees to look at that stormwater that was originally an exclusion to this project because we were looking at, you know, what we could get without that, hitting that tipping point. So what we wanted to bring to the committee today is, is both of these options to get feedback on, on any preference between the two directions we could go in here.
Is the dotted line the easement?
Yes, so that, well, the dotted line is the property line. So you can see that is the property line.
Well, that's where you'll need easement, then.
That's where we'll need the, so we'll need the permanent easement. We were planning on just boxing out an area that covers that dotted line through all our facilities. And then you need a little more for construction easement because you'll have equipment getting in and out of there, but that'll just go back to the, the district after.
And you have relocating goalposts. I think that's a football one, if I'm correct there.
Yeah.
Is there room to move south?
It is. So the, we would shift the, the entire football field about 10 feet to the south. We've reached out to the different user groups, and it doesn't seem to be an issue for this field. There's, they mostly do flag football and younger kids out here anyway. So one of the other concerns or the thoughts it brought up was how close the post will be to the parking there. We don't really see a, a large concern of balls flying into the parking lot. It may happen occasionally. If it becomes a problem, there's always options of nets you can put up, but it's not like a baseball or a lacrosse ball necessarily, so. But yes, we have room to shift the field.
When I first looked at it, I was, I have two things. You're going a 77% increase in the total cost to get a 45% increase in parking spaces. And, and that, you know, jump per space is significant. However, I do like the connectivity of the, you know, two parking lots, but I don't know if it's worth that much of a, of a jump in price, at least right now.
And the school will be also using this parking lot, am I correct or incorrect?
This parking lot, are you talking about the high school?
Yes.
Right now, we, they, they do use the parking lot on the north side. I, that's not entirely full. I, I don't see that they would want to, they, they would have enough parking demand to continue down into this lot as well, especially since it's a farther walk up to the school.
So you're looking for board direction tonight, correct? Which we kind of prefer, or?
Correct. So if we want to, I would say, if we want to go with option two, and, and let's say we want to maximize the parking in this area. If we're ever going to do anything with that property, you can see on option one, it leaves this small section of land here. Anything you build there, we basically have hit the limit of building any impervious surface in the V-HAC with this option without needing stormwater. So anything more you want to build will trigger those increased stormwater costs. So if at any time we want to build something in this area, we will be hitting that higher fee, and, and you'll be, we'll be having to, to increase the stormwater. And you'll get the best value if we do it now, all at once, you know, as we're doing one contract, things are only going to get more expensive in the future. However, if we want to just get the most value-added parking section, it would be option one.
Where did, where did the impetus come for the increased parking in the first place?
We have been getting a lot of feedback from our user groups in the summer, especially on the weekends, or when we have baseball tournaments, soccer tournaments. We really hit, hit max parking capacity. It hits hard when the, when the baseball specifically has tournaments, and then there's soccer games going. We've been getting a lot of feedback from our user groups that, that they don't have enough spots.
And was there an estimation of how many extra spots were needed?
You know, that's, that is honestly the one missing link, that we don't have a hard number that we're working to here. I can't, I didn't come tonight and say the, the tipping point is 100 stalls, and that's exactly what we need. These will be the prime parking spots for this area, too. So there's always more park, you know, not always, but a lot of times, there's, there are areas much farther north. We can use the high school lots generally on the weekends that are amenable to that. It's just a significantly farther walk. So when you have teams switching over for baseball games and soccer practices, you get a lot of people coming and dropping off, looking for those close spots rather than going all the way up and parking farther to the north. So I think that's where we're getting a lot of the frustrations from the parents, the user groups, for the need for more parking. So it's, it's a major issue that we're hearing from our groups out there, but what exactly that number is, we, we don't have a specific target.
And then there's already that parking just to the west of this.
The Stevenson.
Correct, yeah.
And I don't mean to be a pusher on this, but the, that facility, V-HAC, is owned by the village and paid by the village. It's $260,000 every year, and this is a point that the residents do not pay for this. So any of their kids and all the fields, all that activity that's done on there is by the village themselves out of our pocket, not out of the taxpayer's pocket. So I'm just hitting that because I just went through some things with baseball. So again, this is a cost, I'm probably leaning more to the option one, only for the fact that you're at, what, 700 and some odd with option two.
And in regards to that lot to the west, the Stevenson lot, is that gate open for people to go in there and park?
Are you talking about on the other side of Fairway?
Yeah. You know, it's not, that's a shorter walk than to the high school.
Correct.
I feel like the gate, because I drive by there all the time, it's always closed.
You're talking about the Stevenson baseball field?
Yeah, it's closed more...
If it's across tournaments, it would be open.
Where corporate, Nike Parkway going into the V-HAC is like almost never closed unless it's like middle of winter. So yeah, that one, I think, closes on a regular nightly basis.
Except for tournaments, I've had it open.
Yeah.
I can get more information on that, but I don't know off the top of my head about the access to that lot.
It can be utilized, too, because it's...
Well, here, we have the key for these gates. The police do. So I mean, if we had, you know, go into the parking lot of Stevenson's, you know, we should talk to them beforehand, but I mean, it's accessible.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I think, I, I, I think there are events where those parking lots are sometimes available. There's events where those areas are served by those parking lots, and they're not available to these. I, I don't think it's a matter of, geez, if we could just use those, that would fix a problem. I, it's, it's, we, we have a lot of games, tournaments, weekend activities down there, and, and parking's just maxed.
So what is the, the preference of the board? Option one, option one or option two?
I, I like option one, and the reason why is because, you know, you're also going to have more maintenance cost each year, and if you, and, you know, and the water retention, all that's going to increase operating costs each year. And you're talking 100 stalls, and it's kind of where the VOR is there, across the street. It's about 100 stalls, too, so you're doubling that.
Correct.
Right, and what's at the current, by the, by the four fields? I mean, that seems, I mean, you're adding a lot of parking with option one, you know, and I think to not have to touch stormwater could be, it's, it's, it's an easier remedy. Now, look, you got the big weekend tournaments, they're parking in the, they're parking at the corporate area parking lots for fees anyways, like the big, like the lacrosse ones and the soccer tournaments.
Yeah, for, for the, the lacrosse and soccer tournaments.
Those are all, they're their own entity. But when you got soccer, you know, it's Saturday, and you got soccer and all those fields, and you got baseball and softball going on, too. Yeah, it gets a little crazy, because then they start parking up at the high school stadium lot, too. So there's plenty of parking there to go around. Adding this would be a nice filler. If you look at the overhead, it just adds a little bit of space, and, and it'll probably attract more of the soccer players because it's closer to their fields, and pull them away from the baseball lots a little bit. I'm fine with option one.
Trustee Markwart?
I, I'll agree with Michael, but I, I'm actually on option one.
Trustee Appenheim?
Yeah, option one seems more prudent to me.
Trustee Forster, option one?
I agree.
Mayor, seems like we all want option one.
Are we going to get funds out of the COVID money? Is there money in there for this?
Get money out of the COVID?
COVID.
Well, the ARPA funds, Mayor, have been, have been spent.
Long spent.
Yeah, we don't have any of that left.
I mean, and they're essentially reflected in our current fund balance. So we are, in effect, using those funds for our capital improvement program for this year and, and the next few years.
Do we have, we have the park just to pay us back some money to yours?
Each year, sir.
Is that about $900,000?
That is correct.
Okay, shall I give you?
Yeah, so I just add with option one, that's already what we're under contract with the engineer for, it's already funded in the, in the proposed draft budget. So we won't be bringing anything back to the board other than the actual construction contract later this year, once we go to bid on this plan.
Okay, sounds good. All right, so that, that's it for this evening? Do we have?
We do have a closed session.
Closed session, all right. So is there a motion to adjourn committee, the whole, to go into closed session?
Motion to adjourn? For personnel purposes.
Okay. We have a motion a second to go into, to adjourn and go into closed session for personnel purposes. Roll call, please.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Appenheim.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tim Cook.
Aye, motion carries. We are adjourned, and we will not be conducting any business after the closed session.